All right, by my clock it is four o'clock. So let me call this July 13th meeting of the Congress Select Board to order. The first item on our agenda is town accountant warrants, and it's the only item on the consent agenda. So if I could have a motion?
Motion to accept a town accountant warrant.
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates? Ms. Hotchkiss?
Does not appear to be here.
No, not yet anyway. Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to be very slow in saying aye because Susan looks like she's just about ready. And that too, so aye.
Ms. Bates? To accept the warrant?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you all very much. I note that it passes unanimously. The next item of business is the town manager's update. Mr. Town Manager?
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, so just a brief. I know we have a lot to get to tonight, so I'll be brief in my update. One of the things that we're looking into right now is a possible outdoor community event. We have a group of folks who are actively working on some options. And I guess, I guess I'll spoil or alert it a little bit is we're looking to do an outdoor movie. And so we're tracking down vendors and looking at locations and kind of working on marketing. But we've got a great team together who are actively talking about this. So I hope to make an announcement in the next week or so. But it'll hopefully be a fun night out, which I think is much needed. And because it would be a drive-in, it would be compliant with the governor's orders with regards to outdoor gatherings, which I reviewed, re-reviewed again today, and may impact planning of some other previously discussed outdoor events. But I don't want to delve into that too deeply until we're more specific in what, in those events and what the impacts are. So the other thing we spend a lot of time in, as observers of these meetings know, is the planning for the annual town meeting. And we spend a lot of time talking about it here, but we also spend a lot of time discussing it behind the scenes and looking at a lot of different variables. So I just, it's, it's a one-line report. We're spending a lot of time planning for town meeting, but it is, doesn't indicate the level of effort that goes in and the number of departments involved, all for good purpose. There are so many moving parts and so many scenarios that we need to plan for that. And I know, by the way, no playbook has ever been written for. So if folks have questions or, you know, comments about town meeting planning, I can try and address them, probably not better than the moderator. But I just want, you know, in terms of an update, that's something that's consuming a lot of our bandwidth. I do have a little bit of bad news to share in that we were not selected for the shared spaces grant from the Commonwealth. We got that news, I think, today, and that's disappointing. I thought we had a very strong application. Nevertheless, we are going to continue to try and find grant opportunities to help, to help the local business community and help make improvements to the community generally. But I wanted to share that our, our application for, to really help develop a program for outdoor seating, amongst other things, was not approved. And then another thing we're spending a lot of time on is on the planning for our first floor renovations at Townhouse. And the, the primary thing there is the project is out to bid, and we expect the filed sub bids by July 23rd, and the general bids, the GC bids will be in by April, by, excuse me, August 6th. That's another effort that has generated a lot of internal discussion and scenario building. Once we know, basically, we've been holding off on certain planning decisions in terms of our facilities and reopening based on what happens with those bids. Because if the bids come in on budget, then we're going to, that'll be a catalyst for a series of decisions that we're going to make. If the bids come back well over budget, that'll be a different kind of catalyst for a different set of decisions that we would have to make. So I just want to let the board know that, that we are, we are moving forward with that. It was, as you know, it was previously funded. It was, you know, I guess, I think I mentioned this before, but the primary driver of it was to create separation for safety between, you know, customers and, you know, the, our employees, who, especially with the collection of money, sometimes cash. And now in COVID-19, that separation is even more necessary. And so we've got a really great design, and we think it'll be really a much better experience for both the employee and the general public. So stay tuned for, for an update on that in early, in probably mid-August. And, you know, I think that just in terms of why that's important, there'll be some relocations of services if we are on budget and we do, and we do green light that project. And then two things that would be impacted were, are both early voting, as well as potentially the presidential election. Not the dates of those things, but how those things are processed and the logistics that, and the major logistics that go into conducting both of those things. So I don't have anything for you just right now, but those could be two moving pieces as a result of the project. So that's it for me. Other than, I hope people are mindful of the weather. That's, I think, getting ready to come by here.
Thank you very much. Does, does the select board have any questions for the town manager? I don't see any, all right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Chair's remarks. I do have a couple to make, both in form, in terms of an update. First, with respect to town meeting. As you know, it is now scheduled to be September 13th at 1:00 on the Doug White Fields. The town moderator is working very hard to develop protocols for that. As part of the process, the clerk of the select board, Linda, and I met with the chair and vice chair of the finance committee, and the town moderator reviewed all of the town meeting warrants to try to determine what could be placed on the consent calendar, what we will need to move, what might be able to be postponed, and what warrant articles are. We expect no motion. Then after the five of us met just earlier this afternoon at 2:30, the full finance committee and the select board met with the town moderator to review this list of articles and to kind of update. We had a very productive meeting. I've developed a revised list, which I've sent to the chair and vice chair of the finance committee and the clerk of the select board. The next thing that we're going to be doing, again, the chair and vice chair of the finance committee and the clerk and myself will be meeting with the moderator. Because what we're going to do is we're going to have a new round of public hearings. They will be in August. We haven't exact set the date yet. And it won't be a public hearing on all of this, all of the articles on the warrant, but it will be a hearing on all of the planning board articles because the planning board must have a hearing no longer than six months before the annual town meeting, and they're kind of blown by that deadline. So they're going to have to review all of the planning board articles. And then we are going to review which of the remaining articles there have been changed or seem to have some concerns about them. And we will have a second round of public hearings. There will be Zoom hearings, of course, but Minuteman Media Network will record all of them. And together with the previous public hearings we had on the other town articles, these will be the major sets of presentations that will be used as background for the annual town meeting. As the moderator has said, there will not be any presentations at town meeting of the warrant articles. There'll be a binder that will be distributed at town meeting, which will list all of the warrant articles and have other information about it. But there will be no presentation. So these revised public hearings and the original ones that we've had will serve as a primary detailed set of information for, for folks as they prepare themselves for town meeting. So I'll be back to you again with more information on that as we make progress about resetting these, these public hearings. The next item on our agenda, I have one more remark to make, but it's related to the next item on our agenda, which is the town and library corporation agreement. I had scheduled it on the agenda here to serve as the basis for a public's ability to provide input to this, but I was written by a citizen today saying that perhaps wasn't giving enough notice and enough time to it. So what we will do instead is today we will discuss the agreement with the select board. And we have Mario and Sheri who are joining us. Those two, together with the town manager and I, worked on this draft. And Mario was good enough to provide a memorandum, which I circulated to the select board, which sort of outlines the significant changes that were made to the library agreement. And so we'll go through those this evening, taking the input of the select board, coming back to Sheri, Stephen, Mario, and I, just see if there are any adjustments that need to be made for that. And then I have scheduled a public hearing for July 27th at 4:00 to be the public hearing for the public to fully participate in these, in these discussions. On the website with the select board material for tonight's meeting is a draft of the agreement that was reached. And I will ask Jeremy to post this memorandum developed by Mario as a guide to everybody as to those changes that were made in the, in the draft agreement. So those are the remarks I have animated. And do you have any questions? I appreciate being written to with that concern today. And I reached out to the former chair of the Public Private Partnership Committee for her input on that, and she agreed that we needed to have a separate public hearing for that. So I was glad to get that input and make those changes to today's approach to this item. So without further ado, the next item on our agenda is the agreement between the town and the library corporations. As I said, I've distributed that to everybody along with a memorandum produced by Mario. I don't know who would like to take the lead on this, but I think the most appropriate way to go through this is using the revised agreement memorandum that, that Mario produced for us to go through the significant changes that were made to the document. So with, with, if there is no objection? See, none. All right, the, in section 1 of the agreement, the section updates the library's mission and the library corporate relation to. This was simply input and adjusting of the document to reflect the current, the current mission statement and the relationship with the corporation to it. So any questions from the select board on that particular section? Okay. Section 2, the section, "More clearly defined policy areas for which each entity is responsible and maintains the principles of policies of the town and the library are not to be inconsistent with one another." This was a very fruitful discussion where we were each able to lay out our particular areas of responsibility and clarify this some, and specifically introduce a sentence there that made it clear that our job is to make sure that these goals and principles are to be consistent with one another. Any questions there? Okay, section 3, the town and corporation.
Mike? Jane has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, less of a question, more of a, this is good to hear because it was, it has been one of the concerns that, in the committees I'm liaison to, that deal with the library, that has been a consistent point of worry.
Good, I'm not good, but yeah, thank you. I think we're all glad to make some clarification there. Section 3, town and corporate responsibilities. It, just to clear more clarity, defines these areas for which, for which each entity is responsible, such as setting library hours, fines, budgeting, fundraising, which is, I think, covered, good revisions, but straightforward. Section 4, this section defines the library director's administrative responsibilities and requires the library director to attend the corporation's monthly meetings and report on library operations. This allows both the library director and the library corporation to be current with the activities and plans of others so as to, one, coordinate the same and be, inform the town manager and library committee as to the matters for which the library corporation is dealing that may affect library operations. So a good way to coordinate the two, two components here to hopefully get better synergy and better information flow. Section 5, this section defines the entity which owns property that comprises a library. So this was just an articulation of who owns certain things and fairly straightforward, but cleaned up a lot of language here. And Mario, Sheri, or Stephen, if you, if you wish to add anything to, to this as I, as I read, please don't hesitate to, to do so. Section 6, director, curator, special collections and vault space. This, as I will say, occupied a considerable amount of our time trying to make sure that we were careful in defining people's responsibilities and the like. So this section was substantially revised and more explicitly defines, among other matters, the role of the town manager, the library corporation, the curator, responsibilities for special collections and use of the library vault space, the library corporation's relation to the library staff, and responsibilities regarding the performance evaluation of the library director and curator. So it requires that, for both of those, as you know, both the library director and the curator are town, town employees, but it made explicit that the town was to gain input from the library corporation about the performance of both of those, for both of those positions. Section 7 dealt with library maintenance. And this is where we, I think, made some really good progress. In recent times, library corporation has found that the town has certain capabilities that can help with the maintenance of the library facility at a reimbursed cost lower than outside vendors. This section is a placeholder to allow the town and the corporation to explore synergies for more efficient and lower-cost ways of maintaining the library physical plant. So what will happen is that there will be developed a memorandum of understanding between the town and the library corporation dealing with this maintenance, and either it will just freestand as a memorandum, or it can be then come back as an amendment to the library corporation. We didn't decide on which of those, I think, made more sense, but they're working on that. I know Jeff Adams has been in touch with Stephen Crane to, to deal with that. Have I missed anything in that area that needs to be further?
No, I would just add, Mike, that, you know, this is really kind of a new area for this agreement, which is one of the reasons why we, in part due to COVID-19, weren't able to really get this nailed down for the, for this version. And plus, we wanted to be able to have some flexibility because we knew that, you know, kind of changing the paradigm on maintenance. And I want to make sure we're clear between maintenance slash custodial services and capital improvements. Capital improvements will remain the duty and the responsibility of the corporation, but maintenance and custodial services is something we think the town could provide in partnership with the corporation, maybe a little more responsibly and flexibly than they currently have now, which is basically a series of contracted relationships. So, and so I think this is an area where I, we did spend a lot of time and game a lot of rounds, so I don't, I don't want the, the, this kind of placeholder, need for an MOA, be perceived as we don't, we're not really sure what we want to do. I think we have a clear picture what we want to do. It just, it's going to take some doing to nail it all down. When I say doing, I just mean mostly data collection and a little bit of research.
Sheri?
Yeah, I have two comments and a question about this section. Well, first of all, the gentleman commented, just thank Mario for putting together the summary because that was very, very helpful. I didn't have the old agreement, and I didn't know how to find it. And this is just incredibly helpful, thank you. I'm really glad also to see this section. I think there's been a lot of confusion out in the public, and I know what I've been confused about. So I'm glad to see in this section that you're going to, you know, define capital improvements, distinguish between capital and maintenance, identify the contract, set forth conditions, and setting forth the level of financial contribution to the town from the corporation. And all of this is going to be spelled out excellent. And I want, my question is, what is the process for developing the MOU?
So it really is going to require subsequent conversations and, and data collection from the corporations. Really Jeff Adams has been, really handles most of that for, for the corporation. He has given some information, but also Ryan, or our facilities director, is going to kind of represent the town and kind of figuring out what kind of resource would we need, you know, in terms of staff resources, contracted resources. And I, really, because we've been straight out trying to, trying to deal with COVID-19's and the pandemic's impact on, and the governor's orders impact on our facilities and operations, we just simply haven't been able to get to this. But we have had a handful of conversations, enough, and, and, and Mike, if you'd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've had enough conversations to know enough to know that there is a there there for this. It just needs, it just needs some more refining, and that's just been a time issue.
And Sheri, before, and what will happen is once the memorandum of understanding is in place, in other words, I've got it figured out, it will go first back to the groups that's been working on this, Mario, Sheri, Stephen, and myself. And what we will do there is we will decide whether this should just come forward as a simple memorandum of understanding or whether this should be proposed as an amendment to this disagreement. And in either case, it will then come to the select board for discussion. And, and then if it's a memorandum of understanding, we will, and we approve it, then we will authorize the town manager to sign it. And if it's part of the agreement, then we'll just amend this agreement and go through, back through the process. Susan, Lynn, and Jane?
I just had a clarifying question. Currently, the corporation pays for the maintenance of the library buildings. And in the course of this discussion going forward, it may be that the town is kind of a sub, is a contractor to the corporation for certain duties, but the town is not taking over responsibility for the maintenance. Is that correct?
So the town would be taking over responsibility for the maintenance. And the, when I say the data needs to be collected, it is, you know, Jeff has done somewhat of an inventory of vendor contracts and maintenance expenses over the last few years for the library. And we need to analyze that to say, if we had to do all of this, what level of resource would that require? And then, you know, would the corporation be willing to provide resources to the town for us to, to be able to, to staff up? And, you know, on a, you know, for time and materials, would we be able to procure the time and materials with support from the corporation to kind of meet that need? And I think, at first blush, I think the answer is yes, we can. And so, you know, but the idea, it wouldn't be necessarily a dedicated person just for the library. It would be adding to our facilities team, so the library would have the benefit of all of the, of the facilities division. And then it would be additional capacity for our facilities team that could benefit all of their town facilities. So again, it, the, the details on that are, still need to be worked out, but I think conceptually, we believe that there really is. And I'll give an example. There was a, there was last summer, there was a problem with their HVAC, and their contractor couldn't get there. And we were able to send our HVAC tech over, and he was able to fix the problem relatively quickly. And that kind of made us think, geez, you know, maybe there's something to this. Maybe because our facilities division's here and knows our buildings and, you know, we share a lot of the same resources, maybe this is something we can do on an ongoing basis. So, you know, but again, I don't think, we can't, we can't put the facilities division in an adverse resource position where our services in other facilities will suffer as a result of this. I think the corporation understands that. They don't have that expectation. We certainly aren't going to, you know, move off of that position. But I do think with the investment that the corporation makes into their facilities through maintenance and what we think it would take us to absorb that, there, we think we can make it fit.
Can I just follow up? I just want to be clear. I'm worried that the, the responsibility for the maintenance will slide over into a town expense as opposed to a corporation expense. And I just want to clarify that the corporation will be reimbursing the town for whatever the cost of the services is.
How that's structured, Susan, hasn't been fully determined. But again, I think in terms of, we won't take on the responsibility unless we have a way to, you know, meet, meet that need without additional taxpayer burden is a kind of a threshold thing, and I think everybody understands that.
Okay.
I just wanted, and I think the answer has been made evident by Stephen's lengthy response, but I was wondering if the, it's the expectation that the MOU would be available for the public hearing?
I don't think it'll be done, but if it is, of course.
Yeah, okay.
And when it's done, it'll come back, and we'll have a chance for folks to review it and comment on it before we act on it.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think, I just, I don't think it'll be available. I would say probably in the fall, quite honestly.
Right. Any other comments? All right, section number eight.
I should, wait, sorry, Mike. I should say, we gave ourselves until December 31st, 2020, to get an MOU done, as you can see in the agreement. So obviously, we'd like to get it done before that, but that, we gave ourselves a deadline specifically so it wouldn't slide endlessly.
All right, section number eight, budgeting. This section now requires that the library corporation, in addition to providing the town with a copy of its annual budget and audited financials, is also to provide the town with a five-year capital plan. That'll be, I think, helpful to the town in particular as we do some of our planning. Section nine, a library revenue sources. This section identifies revenue sources for town and library corporations' funds and now provides a mechanism to address ambiguities in bequests and gifts for library purposes. For some of you that might know, you know, gifts come in. Whose gift is it? Is it really for the town? Is it for the corporation? Many people in the public don't necessarily make a distinction between the two, and they're just giving to libraries. So this, I think, provided a little bit of clarity and help in sorting that out. Section 10, library expenses and renovations. This section determines which entities have responsibility for operating and capital expenses. Importantly, the revised town corporation agreement carries over the requirement that no renovations or expansion of library facilities that may increase library staffing or materially impact the town's operating costs shall be undertaken by the corporation without consultation with the town. And now specifically lists the library committee in addition to the library director and the town manager. It also requires that deliberations be mindful of community goals set forth in the town's long-range plan. I think this was very important to both Stephen and myself, and there was no objection from the library folks either. But I think this more closely ties any actions that the library corporation would take to be consistent with town goals. In this connection, the library corporation is required by the current town corporation agreement before purchasing 12151 Main Street. Consult with the town manager and library director and town staff before moving forward. This section increases the minimum required annual library contribution for books and materials from $50,000 to $75,000, although the library corporation has in recent years provided $125,000 annually for this purpose. Section 11, this is a new section and was placed into the revised town corporation agreement to recognize the need for communication among the major town parties involved with the library. It includes a provision, subsection 11D, that provides for regular communication between the library corporation president and the town manager to discuss library operations and whether the revised town corporation agreement is working as intended. So that is a quick, not long it took us to get there. That was a pretty quick summary.
I counted, I counted 16 drafts.
16 drafts. I don't remember how many times we met. It was always very cordial, but we had a lot of very interesting, detailed discussions. Are there any other comments from members of the select board or concerns you think want to raise? All right. It isn't really time for public comments, but I can see a number of citizens here. Just let me ask if anybody has a, this is not substantive for the hearing, but if anybody has a comment or question that they'd like to raise now, I'd be perfectly happy to hear it. Seeing none, Mario and Sheri and Stephen again, on behalf of the town, I want to thank you all for the hard work that you put into getting this. I think it's a good agreement and I look forward to the public hearing and we can move forward with this. So thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the select board position on warrant articles. What we're going to begin with this evening is, as I previously mentioned to you, with FinCom and the select board ment, and there is a set of warrant articles that currently are moderator intends to put on the consent calendar, a number of articles that at current time will be moved, a number of articles for which no motion is expected, a few articles that will be postponed to a subsequent town meeting, and two articles that will be referred back to the planning board. And I say that to you because you may or may not remember, I know I've said this before, but if a planning article is not moved at a town meeting, or if a planning article is voted down at a town meeting, it can't be brought back to town meeting for two years. So for those articles that are not going to be either on the consent calendar or be or be moved, there will be a motion to send them back to the planning board for reconsideration, and then they can reconsider them. And at the next town meeting, if they want to have them be on the warrant, they can be. So the articles that we are going to be talking about this evening are those articles that were thought to be good candidates for the consent calendar. And I want to say that putting articles on the consent calendar is, the moderator has been clear, has been a little more generous than he or she would have been at any previous town meeting. And that is simply so that we can be as efficient as possible and and complete our town meeting in as short a possible time. And the provision that if any 10 voters wish an article be taken off the consent calendar, it will be. So we're going to err on the side of having articles on there, at least articles that we don't believe there's a great deal of controversy. And then if there is controversy, the article by 10 voters can be taken off. The one kind of exception to that, I would say, is currently the Community Preservation Committee appropriations are on the consent calendar. And you'll recall, I think there are 10, I think that's right, nine or 10 particular appropriations in that. So when the moderator gets to this consent calendar for this article, which is article 44, she will read 44A, B, C, D, each one of them in turn. And if 10 people object to any one of the appropriations under the CPC article, it will be taken off, but the remainders can stay on the consent calendar. So that was just a way they thought, everybody thought would be more efficient than having it stand alone and going through the same process again. So if the select board has its its memorandum of these articles, we have new folks on the on the select boards who I'll tell you what the the procedure is. And the procedure is we go through each of these articles and talk about them. What comes to vote is that there's, there's three ways we could vote. We could vote affirmative action, or no action, or take no position. And so that's, it's not a no vote or a yes vote. It's affirmative action, no action, or no position. So complicating factor is here that because we're operating under the emergency declaration by the governor and allowed to have these meetings be a Zoom, every vote that the select board takes has to be by roll call. And, you know, so that just gobbles up time. But here's what I'm proposing to do. I'm proposing that if any of you have an article that you don't think you want to vote affirmative action on, let's, or you want to have more discussion, let's take off of this list, and then we'll have one vote on each, on all of those articles that remain. And then we can come back and pick up a particular article. That way hopefully we have fewer and fewer roll call votes. So let me, let me ask you then, are the articles on here, which are the ones, again, this is, we're voting our recommendation for town meeting, right? Terry?
Just a question. Explain a little bit, what is no position? And what, what would be an example of anything? What I thought the select board pretty much had to take a position on everything. So.
Oh, we don't have to take a position on anything. But essentially, there were sometimes articles that are, you know, they're not, they're not money articles, they're not real policy articles, they're a stand on a particular issue. I wish I could remember. I can't, maybe some of the folks who are in or can remember an article like that, but.
I mean, example, when we voted to become a welcoming community, that would have been a position, you know?
So we're not required to take positions on articles. We pretty much do, but there are some that come up that are just, sounds like it's none of our business. It's this citizen's business and they just sort of weigh in. Any other comments? Linda?
So Mike, you know, sometimes we, at this point in time, we don't have sufficient information to take a position.
Okay.
So sometimes we've delayed action until we had further information.
Right. So are there articles? So again, I'm asking the same, the same question. Are there articles on this list that I distributed for which you either don't want to vote affirmative action, or you think we need additional information before we take that? And if there are, let's get it off the list. We can talk about them separately, but we can still then deal with the majority of these articles. None? In the interest of making sure I was heard. Terry, I, you look like you're getting ready to say something.
Well, I'm just looking at a few articles that we talked about at the 30 meeting where we know that financially, the numbers are going to change, that we don't have the up to date numbers in in the warrant right now. And I'm wondering, I still think they're probably going to stay on the consent calendar, and they're probably going to get an affirmative vote. So if we vote affirmatively now, there's, and something really crazy happens, we can do a reconsideration.
Of course.
Okay. I don't think that will happen. I just wanted to clarify that.
I wouldn't bet on, I wouldn't bet on anything this does.
So.
I would just, Linda?
Mike, I'll just make another comment. And it relates to what I said earlier about may not have enough information at this time to take action. Because of the unique circumstances we're under with town meeting this year, I think to the extent that we can limit the number where we take no action would be helpful. We do have time till after the town hearings if, if we're so moved to do that. And I think the expectation is that recommendations from both the select board and FinCom and the planning board will appear in the FinCom report. So.
Yes, they will. And I will remind you that the moderator has said that no article will be on the consent calendar unless the finance committee and the FinCom have voted affirmative action. So again, you have this list in front of you. I'm going to read it to make sure there's no misunderstanding. This is Articles four, which ratifies personnel board classifications. Article five, which is classification and compensation. Article seven, which is the increase in the COLA base. Article eight, the use of free cash to offset property taxes. Article 12, authorize expenditures for revolving fund under Massachusetts General Law 44. Article 13, the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. Article 14, funds for affordable housing. Article 15, senior means tested property tax exemption. Article 17, light plat expenditures and payment in lieu of taxes. That's one of those areas that may change, and we could reconsider if it changes. So difficult for us. Article 18, solid waste disposal. Article 19, sewer system expenditures. Article 22, expenditure from pay access and cable related fund. Article 23, BD Center and Fitness, BD, BD Swim and Fitness Center Enterprise Fund. Article 24, Minuteman Regional Technical High School District Budget. We've been given the latest update. That has not changed. And it turns out that the number, majority of towns have already approved this. So next is Article 29, the Middle School Stabilization Fund. Next is Article 35, the Planning Board Hammerhead Lot Article. Article 36, criteria for parking relief. Article 38, zoning by law amendment to allow fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers and dances. Article 39, zoning by law for prohibited uses. Article 44, the Community Preservation Committee appropriations. Article 50, additional liquor licenses. And I think Article 52 was taken off of that, that there won't be a motion on that. Yes, Terry?
Yes. Mike, I believe you skipped Article three, meeting procedure.
Yeah, that's done. That's done. And we don't need to take it. Article two and Article three, we don't need to take positions on.
Okay.
All right. Any comments or questions about these? All right. Linda, I would entertain a motion then.
Move that the select board takes affirmative action on all the articles listed for the proposed consent agenda.
With the exception of Article 52.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Otchus?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. And I will say that we will begin taking up articles. But what I'm going to do is after we've met with the finance committee and the moderator to set the new public hearings, we will not schedule any review of those particular articles until after the public hearings. So we'll deal with all the rest of those articles. Any other comments or questions about that? Right. Thank you all very much. The next item is committee nominations, of which are none. And the following item is committee appointments.
Move to appoint Nathaniel Welch of 141 Stowe Street to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to begin August 1, 2020, set to expire April 30th, 2023.
Our second?
Second.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Otchus?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. And I note it passes unanimously. Very little miscellaneous correspondence, except that that I already mentioned this earlier about public hearing for the library corporation. So next is public comments. Comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So Mike, you skipped committee liaisons and reports?
Wishful thinking. Who would like to begin?
I will.
Susan, please do.
Okay. I attended the planning or watched the planning board hearing on July 7, and they had two public hearings. The first one was on a project application for Minuteman Arc to expand their parking area, add a sports court and a walkway. There are a number of comments and concerns about it. There's going to be a site visit next week, and the hearing was continued. The second was application of Chase Morgan Bank, JP Chase Morgan, to put bank, rebuild the building that is the now closed Citizens Bank at the corner of Baker Ave and Main Street. They presented a plan. They had the building much closer to the sidewalk and the parking shifted to the back. And again, there were a number of questions and comments about it. And that hearing too is to be, will be continued. They talked, they finalized their goals for FY21, assigned liaisons, and took care of some other routine business. The next, the other, I was at that community event meeting, which Mike already discussed, and it was a good, a lot of good input. Economic Vitality met on July 8. And they talked a lot about, it was a very good meeting. If you have a chance to watch the tape, I would, I would recommend it. There's a lot of good interchange of ideas. They updated, the committee was updated on by Conquer Together. They current regarding the Summer Solstice Shopping Program, you can download a little sheet from Conquer Together website, or I think the town website as well. And you just have 10 checkoffs for going to 10 different businesses. Enter it in for a drawing. And every two weeks, they have a drawing with gift cards from local businesses. And it's a good way to remind us to keep supporting our local businesses. The Community Chest has established a fund to help local businesses, and they have $50,000 in the fund now. They have 20 applications that they're going to review. It's going to be a rolling fund, and they have some big asks out to increase the fund, but encourage anyone who wants, who is able and wants to, to make a donation to the fund. It's a tax deductible donation. There was talk amongst the members about having an e-commerce subcommittee, talking about the upcoming holiday season and how that that's going to look. And there may be a more of a, an e-commerce presence for businesses, depending on where we're at. But one of the suggestions was there'd be a Concord Mall, and it could be as easy as clicking on the, you know, the website for stores in that bucket, or it could be much more complicated or intricate, where you could buy from all the stores with one purchase. But that's, that's a fairly sophisticated application. And I guess that's it. But it was a very good meeting, and that's it for me.
Right. Who would like to go next? Jane, Sue, Linda, Linda, you're up.
Sure. I attended the ZBA meeting, and the project that's now called Concord Mill Run, which is next to the development, new development that's next to Riverwalk, was approved to go forward. They also were concerned about how they would be able to have input on Articles 34 in particular, and would like to know what the amendment might be. They had heard there might be an amendment to Article 34, and were concerned about the process of how they process of how they could respond to amendments from the town meeting platform that we're going to be pursuing this year. So that, that was a point that the moderator indicated in an earlier meeting today that she's working on for not only them, but for all the committees.
All right. Thank you. Jane?
Um, mine will be short and sweet. I did not have any committee meetings last week.
Excellent. Terry?
Mine is relatively short as well. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, Phil Posner's bike, reported for his bike group that they're working with CPW and Select Board and Town Manager on recommending signage at various pinch points to improve safety along the roadways. For example, you'll see in other towns, a sign that says something like, bikes may take center lane, because that is state law. And there are certain bridges or, or other areas that are narrow enough where the bikes have to actually take up the whole lane. And so they're working on some signage, and we're going to be hearing more about that, I think. The other meeting I went to was the Board of Assessors. Interesting developments. I don't know if you recall, maybe three to six months ago, well, actually it's before COVID, there was a property on Monument Street, 676 Monument Street, it was in Chapter 61A. We had, I think, the right of first refusal. I'm pretty sure this was the same property we talked about. Anyway, Fenn School has purchased that property and paid the rollback taxes, and the Board of Assessors has voted to release all the liens. So they will be expanding the area that is the Fenn School. And the other development was the Concord Rod and Gun Club. The Board of Assessors accepted the forestry land renewal plan for the Concord Rod and Gun Club. That's it.
Right, and I had a couple of meetings, Susan's already reported on one of them. The other was I attended a annual town meeting, planning meeting with the town staff and the town moderator. That's been very productive. So I also report that there is a chair's breakfast this Wednesday, and normally we don't have one in July and August, but I thought with the pandemic and all, it was better to continue to have these to try to keep everybody up to speed, especially on town meeting. And I also note that we just had a resignation from the Board of Registrar, so if anybody out there is interested in that, please get your green card in and let us know. So Stephen?
Yeah, Mike, I know at the joint meeting before this, we talked about the Christopher Heights project being approved for DHCD while we were sitting here. The formal notice did come in from DHCD, so we do have that in writing. And I know that since it was mentioned last minute, I just want to confirm that we do have that approval.
Liz is on the call, she's sent a lot of emails. I appreciate getting that, that heads up. So we'll pass that information along. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none, now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you all very much for attending. Stay well.